Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwos.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies to which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. We actually have a bit of rolled-over business since one of our board members, who is getting to join us again, was not here at the last meeting. So would you like to join Mr. Juliana? And he will redo your oath of office so we can have you back officially.
Thank you.
Mr. Sizmar, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mark Sizmar.
I, Mark Sizmar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For office of member.
For office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. All right, we will start with Dr. Valesky's superintendent's report.
Thanks.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. And welcome back, Mr. Sizmar, to the board. On Friday, January 6th, Lawrence Brook Elementary School launched their 2023 One School, One Book Program with an assembly announcing this year's selection. Lola Levine is Not Mean by Monica Brown. The cafetorium was filled with cheers and applause during the assembly as students were introduced to key characters and themes in the text. The aim of this program is to build a community of readers at Lawrence Brook School. Everyone, students, parents, teachers, and even administrative staff will all be following along together. After the assembly, each student received a book, as well as several great resources, to support positive reading habits at home, including a link to a Lawrence Brook One School, One Book website featuring the reading schedule, teacher read alouds of each chapter, and a letter from Principal Dunn explaining the program. Students also met with their buddy classes to create special bookmarks to use as they read. Thank you to the Lawrence Brook Elementary School PTA for supporting our students by funding the One School, One Book program this year. The program will culminate with a special family fun night hosted by the PTA on Friday, January 27th. Thank you also to the East Brunswick Education Association for funding a grant to send home a few special items, such as reading journals, paint, and soccer-themed pens to help with at-home activities. On Friday, January 13th, East Brunswick High School's esports team triumphed over New Brunswick's P-Tech in our very first match in E.V. history. Our Overwatch team walked away with a final score of 2 to 0 in a best-of-three match. In sports, in girls' wrestling, Ryza Ferrari is the GMC champion. Boys' wrestling were the Brunswick Brawl champs. Cheer took first place at Brookdale Community College Impact Cheer and Dance Challenge. Girls' Winter Track are the GMC Relay Champions, and Boys' Winter Track took second place. Ice hockey had their first win in program history on January 11th. And the East Brunswick High School Orchestra presents Vivaldi's Ring of Mystery on Thursday, February 8th at 7:00 p.m. The performance will be held in the J.M. Pack at Hammerhill Upper Elementary School. This performance has been funded through a grant with the East Brunswick Education Foundation. The theatrical concert version of Vivaldi's Ring of Mystery is designed to introduce the audience to the life and music of Antonio Vivaldi. Due to midterms, January 25th, 26th, and January 27th, and January 30th will be single-session days for East Brunswick High School and Churchill High School students only. On December 22nd, Dr. Vanella met with high school students that are members of the Alliance of Youth Leaders, the Raritan Valley Branch, to celebrate their success in fundraising and accept a $4,000 donation. We are so very proud of Daniel Yu, Colin Howe, Albert Hee, Vivian Sung, Dylan Ing, Matthew Ding, Clara Wang, Alicia Zhu, Austin Ing, and Lucy Liu. These students were able to donate $4,000 to the following high school clubs: Robotics, Marching Band, Model U.N. International Club, Future Business Leaders of America, Swimming, and the 2025 Class Council. So I wanted to acknowledge, are any of those students in the audience today? Could you please stand to be recognized? Thank you for coming tonight. So thank you, that's the end of my report for that.
That's a great report. It's very impressive. I think we're going to see good things from you guys. I'm sorry that Ms. Megan's not going to be here tonight as another one of our stellar students. We have a few presentations, reports tonight, School Board Recognition Month, New Jersey.
I'm going to move over there.
Okay, I thought you might.
I get the pleasure of moving around and doing this once a year. Tonight, we're going to honor our Board of Education with a resolution. They typically are the ones doing the resolutions. This is Resolution of Appreciation, School Board Recognition Month in New Jersey for January 2023. Whereas, the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2023 to be the School Board Recognition Month, a time that all residents might acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education is one of more than 581 local school boards in New Jersey that sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education embraces for all students the goals reflected in the district motto of excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. And whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education helps determine community goals for the education of approximately 8,300 children in preschool through 12th grade. And whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education members receive no compensation for their services, yet are committed and are active advocates for public school students as board members collectively, working with administrators, teachers, and parents for the good of East Brunswick Public School District, public education in general. And whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education provides accountability to the public, communicates the needs of the school district to the public, and conveys to school administrators the public's expectations for schools. And whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education can take pride in schools which rank among the best in New Jersey and nationally in indicators such as high school graduation rates, class size, college entrance exams, participation in advanced placement offerings, and test scores. So now therefore be resolved that we join communities statewide in observing January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month and express our gratitude and appreciation to Lori Lacks, Heather Gwos, Vicki Becker, Mark Carrangelo, Susanna Chu, Mark Sizmar, Lee Wu-Hung, Barbara Reese, and Jeffrey Winston, collectively, the East Brunswick Board of Education for their unwavering service to the student staff and the greater East Brunswick community. Congratulations to you all. And just as an aside, I get to say this every year. You, all of you collectively, are the best board I've ever worked for. You guys are committed, you put in enormous amounts of time. And when we say no compensation, you get an occasional snack or maybe some cookies, maybe an occasional lunch or dinner. But the amount of time you put in for the betterment of all students of East Brunswick and what you do for the administration and supporting the administration and our efforts to make the schools in East Brunswick the best they can possibly be is so greatly appreciated by not only me, but the entire administrative team. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. You definitely make our job easier. You are a delight. We are going to go next to our Envision Math update. Dr. Bowley, is that going to be you? Okay.
The ethics training is being postponed to the February 2nd.
Awesome. I mean, where do you share?
The tests aren't finished yet, so there are multiple choice essays, and they'll be ready for you by then.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to give you an update on the Envision Math program in our K-6 classrooms. Oops. So as you know, Envision Math was implemented in our K-6 classrooms in September. Each of our almost 270 K-6 math teachers have received print and online versions of the Teacher's Edition, the Learning Platform, grade-level manipulative kits, centers kits, and additional support and enrichment materials. Our teachers are happy to have access to these leveled resources to meet the varied needs of the learners in their classes. And although the grade-level math content standards have not changed, this program is more rigorous, and there is a difference in how we're asking the questions of the students and how our students are engaging with the mathematical concepts. In four and a half months, I can certainly tell you our teachers have done an amazing job, and we look forward to seeing what the rest of the year will bring. Beginning last spring and ongoing all of this year, we will be providing learning opportunities for our teachers. We've offered different learning styles in different formats to meet the different needs of our staff. These include videos, live sessions, Zoom sessions, and in-class job-embedded support. The teacher's manual is fully scripted for each lesson and has a PD video that the teachers can watch to introduce how to teach the next lesson. There are math instructional coaches and math specialists in the buildings to support our students and their teachers. A math Google Classroom has been created, which houses all of the information and teaching resources that the teachers may need. And throughout the year, the teachers will be meeting in district-wide grade-level meetings and staff meetings in their own schools. And finally, a survey is being developed and will be shared with teachers to get their feedback. Taking a look into the classrooms, every lesson starts with a solvency share to engage students and to promote collaboration and discussion. Students then rotate into small learning centers, small group work. And I have visited many, many classrooms, and I can certainly tell you that I see our students working in small groups, engaged in differentiated activities, and they are thinking hard about math and collaborating to solve complex problems. Our parents, we know our parents want to support their child at home. And to that end, a comprehensive video showing all of the components of the program was shared with our K-6 parents. Parents can also access online resources at any time for additional information or to help their child at home. And we hosted evening sessions to give the parents an overview of the math program. On the district website, you'll notice a tile that was created to house all of these resources and frequently asked questions that were presented in those sessions from our parents. And that's our update. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Bowley? Mr. Winston, raise your hand.
Thank you, President Lacks. A quick question on, under, on the slide that you had, ongoing professional learning, grade-level specific lessons, teachers will meet with grade-level colleagues four times throughout the year.
Yes, sir.
Have any of those been scheduled yet? And talk to me a little about those results, and are the rest calendared?
Yes, sir. They're all, two of them have happened already, and the other two will be happening in the next few months.
Two have happened already this year?
Correct, yes. After school.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Reese.
And there was a parent session recently at the Hammerhill Elementary School. Was that well received, and can parents see it online in case they missed it?
There's a tile on the district website called Envision Math. The videos are there, the slides are there, the overview video is there, log-on information is there. And all of the questions that were submitted that evening have been answered on the tile. And there's an additional spot to put new questions that would come directly to me and that I would update the tile.
And so that's if the parents have had an opportunity through these sessions, and if they have further questions, they can always reach out to the teachers or whoever.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Have the principals sent something home to the parents, letting them know that that information is out there for those that missed it?
We sent it right to the parents directly.
Perfect, so they all know, so there's no...
It was from Dr. Bowley's office.
Wonderful.
I heard wonderful things about the parent sessions, and it was nice to hear the concerns that were brought up so that information can be distributed. What are we doing to make sure that the elementary parents are receiving the same information? Because talking to parents from different elementary schools, they're getting different kinds of feedback, whether or not they're getting the statement of what's happening in the unit or not. I understand there was some difficulty with the QR codes on the fronts of the workbooks or not. We're usually fantastic about giving each child in every elementary school the same experience, but are we working to fix that?
So not only meeting with the grade-level teachers to clarify expectations, there are almost 300 of them. We're also meeting monthly with the principals and doing walkthroughs in every school to make sure that the program is being implemented the way it was intended in all the classrooms.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Sizmar.
Just real quick, how was the transition? Because everyday math left off in June, let's say for a third or fourth grader. They're transitioning into Envision in the next September. Some of the language is different, for lack of a better word, maybe just some of the terminology is different. How did that go? How did, you know, the transition go for the kids? Especially they've had everyday math for several years and midway through their elementary education, they're switching programs.
They are switching programs, and there are new resources available. The standards, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Mathematics haven't changed. The grade-level skills and concepts that a child would learn in second grade haven't changed. So the resources are new, and maybe some of the language might be new for the children, but the concepts that they would be learning are building on previous learning.
But again, just real quick, how are they doing? How did they do overall?
I mean, I'm telling you, I've been in many classrooms, and what I see in the classrooms are happy children engaged, talking at high levels about mathematics. That's what I'm seeing in the classrooms.
Good, thank you.
Can you give us one challenge that you've experienced? Since it seems so successful and great questions, guys, but can you give us any challenges that you see you can improve on?
I'd say that a challenge is to reinforce with parents to, as the first step, to talk to their child's teacher about any struggles that their child may be having. You know, in talking to principals and seeing some of these teachers at the after-school meetings, they aren't aware all the time. So I think that first step, communicating with the teachers, is very important.
Please go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Winston, sorry about that.
No, no worries. Piggybacking after Mr. Sizmar, I was at the presentation, and I think one of the things that stood out to me, at least from the younger parents, and conversations that they had with me, along with, I know, some of the feedback given in the presentation, spoke directly to what Mr. Sizmar was referring to, and as the parents quantified it as being a gap, that there was a gap. Now, I heard what you said, Dr. Bowley, and I appreciate the comment, but the fact is, the Envision Math is vastly different than what we had had before, not only in concept, but I think one of the things stood out to me was that the students have the opportunity to solve and resolve the problems in any way they see appropriate. I don't think you can get much more different than what they came from.
We had the same approach in everyday math, yeah.
You're saying in everyday math, every student had the opportunity to solve a problem any way they wanted?
Correct. There are multiple ways to get to the right answer.
By choice or by instruction?
Multiple strategies were taught in everyday math.
Okay, all right, then back to my original question, though. The parents were specifying on the younger grades that the gap was not filled in, that they felt that that transition wasn't quite as successful as what you just described. Who's, where are we with this? What is the actual, that's question number one. Question number two is, when is the first quantifiable assessment to determine the effectiveness, the efficacy of this program?
I mean, we certainly do have marking period one grades. I don't know that it's a fair comparison to compare to last marking period one, when we were returning from COVID with a different math program. But we could look at that if you'd like. And two, the gaps, are you talking about individual, an individual child's mathematical learning struggle?
I'm talking about the difference between everyday math and Envision, that it's been stated to me by several parents, along with questions asked in that meeting very directly, that the transition is not smooth. I'm asking you to speak to that because you just said it was. Those are two very different responses, and I'm not in the classroom.
So what I can say is, we started looking at new math programs in 2018, before COVID. We had a couple of years of COVID, and we put the project on hold. Last year, we came back, and in the spring, we started sharing learning opportunities with our teachers to learn the new resources, to teach the same skills that they've been teaching in their grade-level math classroom. Do all of the teachers have full mastery of every piece that's available to them? Maybe not. Do some expectations need to be clarified, perhaps?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're answering my question. There's been specified to be a gap for the younger students between what they had learned in relationship to what Mr. Sizmar is speaking about and what they're being taught now. There seems to be a gully of, the transition is not going well for many students. That was what I heard in the meeting. And the chair of math recognized that from the stage as some sense of awareness. I'm asking you, what are we doing as the opportunity to mitigate this delta between where we were and where we're going with the new program? I'm not concerned about the teachers at this point. I'm talking about the students.
Okay, so this program offers the model. After the solvency share, the students go into small group work with the teacher. And at that time, the teacher can remediate any learning gaps that a child may have and differentiate the practice work to help that child strengthen any areas that are weak.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be advantageous possibly to talk with the math department? Because if you're saying that he acknowledged that this exists, then maybe they can do a little bit of research on their end, and you can kind of get together and find out how that is being remedied? Because I think it's unfair to Dr. Bowley to put her...
I think it's unfair to Dr. Bowley.
But I understand what you're saying, so...
The two presenters, and their names escape me, I'm terrible with chairs' names. But it was a very comprehensive presentation. But I think there's a lot of questions that we need to wrap around. And it sounded to me particularly on the younger ages. It didn't seem as prevalent with the older kids.
Fair point, yeah. So maybe that would be something you could do.
Certainly.
Mrs. Becker?
I'm sorry, Jeff, at my heart of hearing. I missed the first part. You were basing your question on comments you heard at, that's what I didn't hear.
Yeah, at the presentation, a lot of the...
The presentation that Dr. Bowley referred to is the, okay.
Yeah, it was a public presentation for E-Vision, which was an excellent presentation.
No, that's what I didn't hear, where you were. I thought you were like in ShopRite.
I was in ShopRite. That's right. We had this conversation in produce, you're correct.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Bowley?
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And please know that we are committed to supporting the transition for our students, our staff, and our parents.
And I think it would be helpful if you talked to him, Mr. Becker.
Absolutely, will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So as I said, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, we do not get the pleasure of Ms. Megan this evening because she is hopefully winning a swim meet for East Brunswick. So we will look forward to hearing from her.
Yeah, undefeated.
Oh, undefeated, wow. All right, so we're all hoping our swim...
So she chose that over us, as you said.
I understand. Well, you know, she's got Princeton to go to. Okay, so that brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment in educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. A participant will be limited to three minutes duration. Lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary. And as I always do, I like to just remind the public that this is your time to speak to the Board of Education. You will have your three uninterrupted minutes. And please do not take our silence up here as not hearing, you are not caring. Any issues that need to be addressed will be addressed by Dr. Valesky's staff. And I see in the second row here, you have Karen and Janet. So you will be providing us with your information. But if you'd like to leave information with those ladies as well, anything we can get back to you on, we will. So that being said, I'm going to invite my first speaker. If you could come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Robin Zernitsky. I'm coming to the board as a concerned parent. I came to this meeting because Envision was going to be presented, and I wanted to just highlight a few things that have been going on since you're not in people's homes and actually seeing how this is working. Since the beginning of the year, my children have struggled, and it is not a unique situation. It is not a unique school. It's all schools throughout the district, K-6. Just because I was curious how this was presented to the board originally, I did re-watch the November 18th, 2021 board meeting, and I want to applaud all of you for your great questions. All of the questions that you asked were things that I thought about myself, a pilot. What are the challenges? I do believe that some of the answers that you were provided did not align with what actually transpired. For example, we were told there'd be a parent intro meeting. Well, that meeting happened January of 2023. The first day of school was September 6th. I didn't even know that Envision was changing, that we were moving to Envision. Secondly, teacher training. There was a spring of 2022 training session, I'm not sure what it entailed, but I do know that most of the teachers did not get materials on Envision until after or very close to the first day of school due to issues with mailing. These teachers weren't prepared, not their fault. I'm not blaming the teachers. The teachers are working their tails off. In addition, one of the items I noted that Mr. Gugliotta mentioned was consistency amongst the schools, and that is something that East Brunswick really prides itself on. There is so much inconsistency, school to school. Some classes are bringing home their workbooks in order to use some of the features that are really great with Envision. Some aren't. Some teachers are explaining to parents how to use some of the wonderful features, some aren't. Parents have no clue how to help their children. In addition, I want to sort of share with you just some of my real experiences that I'm finding with my children. The questions are so much more rigorous than what we found with everyday math. I'm not saying everyday math is great. I think we're all on the same page that we needed to step it up. My concern is after two-plus years of my children having half-education due to COVID, no one's fault in this room, of course. no one's fault in this room, of course, all of a sudden, we're taking a step forward, we're taking a step up. Children who excelled in math, who loved math, are coming home and saying, "I hate math," and coming home with 60s on their tests. That means, and by the way, the teachers indicate that that's the average grade on a particular assessment. It disturbs me that 40% of the material is not understood by the students. In addition, I also feel that, I know that one of the big highlights was to solve things in any way, but it's computerized. I'm seeing my children be very frustrated because if they put a space in an answer on an electronic test or an electronic homework, it's marked wrong. Or if you do A times B instead of B times A. These are the struggles--
Ten seconds.
Excuse me?
Ten seconds.
Okay, these are the struggles that our kids are feeling, and I want you to know, and I really implore you, to dig further. Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Valesky.
Hi, Mary Ann Tanios. I know most of you, I really had--
Could you please repeat your name?
Mary Ann Tanios.
Thank you.
I really had hoped that I wouldn't have to stand here tonight because, like Ms. Zornitsky, I've been having these discussions since September. I've actually had individual meetings with Mr. Gugliotta, several members of the board, and the bottom line is, this was an excellent curriculum that was poorly executed. It seems an executive decision was made. It was handed off to the teachers and the principals to say, "Figure out how to implement this," and we're missing a critical operational piece in the middle, and that's why we have this lack of consistency. We've been having these discussions, promised things that are to remedy the lack of a transition, the gap, as Mr. Winston pointed out, and nothing has been done except band-aiding it. In fact, I heard that after the sessions that we had, Mr. Gugliotta went back to the teachers, and the only thing he told them to do was give the kids less homework so the parents don't complain. Teachers have approached parents and said, you know, "We're tired of voicing that this just isn't working." Most of the teachers that I've spoken to didn't have a training session until October 24th. Some did have one on September 1st. That is not sufficient for something of this magnitude, and it's completely unacceptable, and I hold this board to a much higher standard. I will say that I believe the teachers and principals have been doing everything they can, but what they've been given to deal with is unimaginable. I would never request this of anyone in my line of work, and I would really hope that we would take a step back and just say, "How can we remedy this without just putting a Band-Aid on it?" I feel like a lot of what we've been saying has fallen on deaf ears, and it's very disheartening. As Ms. Zornitsky said, this has taken an emotional toll on every child in this district, and I don't appreciate that we're looking at the children who have possibly excelled at this, the handful of children, as opposed to those who are struggling. I understand now that the board has decided, or the district has decided, to allow six hours of tutoring for children who are struggling. What about those children who are excelling and now doing average? How is that fair to them? I've personally had to dip into my own resources at $120 a week to have my children tutored since the beginning of the school year, just so they can be back at the A where they were. This is completely unacceptable. We are not, this is not just our feedback. We want a resolution. We want this remedied. I don't know who it was that said they heard positive things about those sessions that they had. Those sessions came at my and Ms. Zornitsky's request, by the way. It wasn't the initiative of this district. Those were our requests, those sessions. And in fact, they felt more like, as the gentleman sitting behind me, who I didn't know, pointed out, they were a sales pitch--
Ten seconds.
--as opposed to actually sharing information that was valuable, and we weren't allowed to ask questions as we would have hoped. So we are looking for resolution. This is not just feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanios. Is anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, what?
Your name and address for the record, please.
Aram Shakir, 8 Lantern Lane. I've been a resident for 24 years in East Brunswick. I am the chair of the East Brunswick Human Relation Council, and I'm also the member of the East Brunswick Planning Board Committee. I originally requested Eid holidays off for the entire district almost 10 years ago. That's right. It's been that many years since the original ask, and since then, almost 30 school districts have incorporated the Eid holiday into their school calendars. Nancy Olvesti, who will be speaking today, formed an Eid committee, and I'm a member of that. It is a group of 12 Muslim women who reside in East Brunswick with children who attend the public schools, and our goal is to get Eid incorporated into the current and future school calendars. East Brunswick has been my home for 24 years. As a Muslim growing up in East Brunswick, I often had to miss classes, tests, instructional time, and had the added stress of making up schoolwork, which was often viewed as a punishment for celebrating and partaking in religious observances. Fast forward 20 years, and guess what? I don't want that for my three children. I want better. I want them to make these, I don't want them to make these sacrifices that I did, and why should they? It's 2023. This is our home, just like it's yours. We are all part of the same community fabric. We are all members of this beautiful, inclusive town. The difference is that our voices have not been heard in almost 20 years. Sorry, 10 years. We are all members of the same community that deserve to have their children celebrate their holiday without any hesitancy or second thought. They shouldn't have to choose between celebrating their holiday or taking a test, celebrating their holiday or missing a project, celebrating their holiday or missing graduation, which my daughter had a graduation planned the same day that we had Eid. We went to the mosque, ran to the graduation, ran back home because we hosted 100 people at our house. And just to provide another perspective around this whole initiative, and to add some numbers, 34 progressive schools have acknowledged and incorporated Eid holiday and have a district-wide closing. Some of those schools are Atlantic City, Pleasantville, I'm going to go fast because I know I don't have time, Ridgewood, Paramus, Teaneck, Leonia, Edgewater, Englewood Cliffs, Hackensack, Montclair, Newark, Irvington, Jersey City, West Windsor, Plainsboro, Boontown, Mount Olive, Clifton, Passaic, Wayne, Patterson, Prospect Park, Pompton Lakes, Elizabeth, Hillside, Linden, Union, South Brunswick, Edison, Piscataway, Saraville, Parlin, Monroe, and Warren. In 2010, when South Brunswick residents requested for Eid off, it was approved the same year, and almost 30 other towns requested Eid off, and without any delays or any runaround, their request was granted within a reasonable timeframe. Thus, 34 progressive districts that have incorporated Eid holiday in their school calendars, and if they can, why can't the township of East Brunswick? We should be a town that is not only committed to respecting diversity, but also celebrating it, and incorporating that into the fabric of our wonderful town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanios. Anyone else would like to speak with the board, to the board this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Harris Shahid.
Could you repeat your name, please?
I'm Harris Shahid.
Thank you.
I live at 16 Apple Tree Lane. I'm relatively new to East Brunswick, but I've been here for two years, so I've had my fair share of experience. I'm a ninth grader at Churchill Junior High. I speak like on behalf of my friends and like all the other Muslims that I know in Churchill, and like we will want a day off for Eid because we feel excluded because all of the other major religions, even the tinier ones, they get a day off for their holidays. But like as being, it's not like we're like a small religion. We're like one of the biggest religious groups in the world, and we don't get a day off. And we always have to worry about if we're like missing any homework or anything, because as like school progresses on, things get harder, and in ninth grade, it's really hard to make up stuff if you like miss a day. And, sorry, if, yeah, we just have to worry about assignments continuously, and it's like really hard. We just don't feel included with every other religious group, even like since we're like the biggest, and like, there's a lot of groups that are just smaller than us, and we're just not included. But, so yeah, that's just, that's all I had prepared. Thank you.
You're doing very well. If you're a student, you can just state your name and your grade, you don't have to give your address.
Okay. Omar Al-Samra, 7th grade. So, this past Monday, we just celebrated Martin Luther King Jr., and we all know what he did. He fought for what he thought was right. In a way, I'm trying to do the same because it's not fair that many other religions have their holidays off, and Muslims don't have Eid off. Like, it would be really hard for a kid in America to like stay up late and lay out cookies and milk for, like, for Christmas. It would be hard for them to do that if they didn't have off the next day. This is how, like, this is similar to how Muslims have a hard time, like, have a hard time having fun and excitement the night before Eid, when they have to worry about missing school and work and tests and anything of that matter. It would be a relief for me and many other kids in East Brunswick to have Eid off. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Miriam Ahmed. I'm a junior in East Brunswick High School. One of the first reasons that we should be able to get Eid off is that members of other faiths do get to enjoy their religious holidays with their families, and we would just like the same opportunity. For us, Eid is like a reward after a month of fasting, which is Ramadan, and we have a significant amount of students, of Muslim students in our school that would benefit from getting this day off. We have a prayer service that takes place early in the morning, so some kids that would be taking off from school miss important lessons and valuable school time. Some might go to school, but they would end up missing the prayer, and nobody really wants to spend their holiday, you know, in school, doing work. Other districts have already implemented this into their school curriculum, and it hasn't messed with any like, you know, school time or anything. As a student, it's been nice and like comforting to have, you know, seen other Hijabis or like Muslims in our community and like involved in our staff, and when it comes to, you know, inclusivity, East Brunswick has done a really good job with that, like in my opinion. And we are very diverse, you know, our district, and including Eid in our calendars, it just like shows more of that, again, inclusivity and diversity. That's all I have for today. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Hamza Shahid, and I'm in 10th grade. Personally, this year, I've taken a lot of offs because I was sick a lot of days this year, and I've already missed a lot of school, and I have to worry about catching up on a lot of things. But for Eid, I don't think that that should be something we would have to take off for and miss something. I know since, from the days that I did take off, I had to make up a lot of work and miss a lot of things, and it did count as like offs, even if they were excused, and you have a limited amount of those as well, but for Eid, I think it should just be off, and I think our religion's holiday should be valued just the same as others, and we should just have off for Eid, and I think that should be respected. That's it.
Hello, my name is Shanzie Badra, and I'm currently a sophomore at East Brunswick High School. I've been a part of the East Brunswick community for over 11 years, and I'm here today to discuss the negative impact of not having the East Brunswick schools off on Eid and the inequality that arises from the current policy. Eid is supposed to be a day of enjoyment and celebration, yet how can Muslim students do that when they are stressed out about school the whole day? Every year, I and so many others like myself have been forced to make the choice between celebrating Eid with our families or going to school. For all of us, missing school often means having a lot of makeup work to do, especially in higher grades, where students can be swamped with hours of extra work just for missing one school day. This ends up becoming quite overwhelming for the students, yet our only other option is to miss out on celebrating this joyous day with our family and friends. I hope the board members can empathize with those Muslim students in their district and understand the ongoing stress that this issue causes. I would also like to use this opportunity to discuss how the current policy of not having schools off during Eid creates a sense of inequality among the students, making Muslim students feel marginalized in their own schools. Even though it is not explicitly stated in the district calendar, it is a reality that the winter break is at a time that makes celebrating Christmas ideal, and that the fall recess is there to accommodate my Jewish peers and friends who have holidays at that time of the year. This school year, there was even a staff development day on the exact same day as Diwali. All this is not to say that we shouldn't have these days off, but that we should continue to move forward and embrace the diversity of the East Brunswick community. When the board can make room in the school calendar for the religious holidays of my classmates and friends, as it should, and when numerous school districts within New Jersey can do the same for their Muslim students, students like myself are left wondering why East Brunswick as a community is failing to create a more inclusive and equitable environment for its Muslim students. In closing, I'm hoping the board will do the right thing here to ensure that the Muslim students feel valued and respected, and that their religious needs are met. This is not only the right thing to do, but it is also essential for the success of our students and our community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Miriam. I'm in 4th grade, so, Miriam Al-Samra. So, today I came to talk about why I want Eid off and many other people want Eid off, because like the night before Eid, I'm like extremely worried because I have to choose between like, like going to school or being able to celebrate with my family and friends, like for Eid. So, like, I, like, when I skip school for Eid, I have to like miss a lot of projects and important work. So like, Muslims celebrate Eid. When I skip school for Eid, I miss like a lot of school. It's like, I mean, now imagine that with a 5th or 6th grader. I mean, like, I'm in 4th grade and I miss a lot of school. And like, a bunch of people don't like making up the schoolwork that we miss. So like, when I miss school for Eid, I have to explain why, but if we add off, everyone will understand it's just a holiday that Muslims celebrate. Also, like, before Eid, Muslims celebrate Ramadan. We fast for a whole entire month with no food or water. After all of that fasting, we deserve one or two days to celebrate. So like, Muslims want off from school for Eid because we have to explain why. We miss a lot of work, and also, we have to like, we deserve one or two days after fasting for a whole entire month. That's all. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Yassin Alfiky. I'm an American Muslim. I'm in 4th grade and I attend Frost Elementary School. I'm lucky to live in a town that has a unique variety of religions and cultures. In this town, there are holidays that are given time off to celebrate with their family and friends, but I feel that Islam is not represented in schools the same way other religions are. For example, when we are absent from school, there's a big chance that we will miss a test or miss a new topic in our classes. I know it will get harder as I get, as I grow, and it will affect my life. Wasn't it Martin Luther King's goal for everybody to be treated equally? Instead, we look at other towns that are giving Eid off. This shows that other towns represent Muslims like Monroe. I'm asking you to please give Eid off. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Ismail Chasteen. I'm a 7th grader at Churchill Junior High School. We should have Eid off because as the years go by, we miss assignments, tests, and projects, and homework. These assignments, as you get older, get more graded, and the expectation of like your completion is like necessary, so you need to complete it. Also, people celebrate Christmas like it's nothing, like, oh, I'm celebrating Christmas. When we celebrate Eid, people ask so many questions. Oh, what do you do? What do you do this? I don't think this is fair, because Eid is just like, you get gifts, you pray, and it's exactly like Christmas. So why don't we have Eid off? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isa Shakir. I'm in 5th grade and I attend Hammer Schul. I would like to have a day off for my Eid holiday. I remember in kindergarten graduation, it was Eid. We went to the mosque to pray in the morning. We rushed to Memorial to attend my graduation, and rushed home back for this big Eid party for 80 people. It would be, mean a lot to me and my Muslim friends. My hometown in East Brunswick gave me off. We can all celebrate family and friends instead of having worries about missed classwork in our all classes. Thank you for listening to me.
Hi, I'm Misha Khan, and I'm a 7th grader at Churchill.
Uh, hi, I'm Maisha Khan and I'm a 7th grader at Churchill. So Eid, uh, as you know, is a very important holiday for Muslims as it celebrates the end of the month-long fasting period of Ramadan. However, students are forced to choose between celebrating with their family and their education. It's unfair that, uh, we have to make this choice as Muslims when students who celebrate different holidays do not considering their given days off. If you choose to go to school on Eid, you miss out on valuable time with your family as well as fun things such as giving gifts and, um, having dinner together. However, if you stay home, then you have lots of schoolwork to make up that can take several hours. So this isn't really a great choice that you have to make. Closing schools on Eid will also allow, um, would also show respect and inclusivity towards the Muslim community. It would prove that the school and district value the religious practices of all students and staff equally and that they're committed to creating a welcoming and envi- and exclu- inclusive environment for everyone, including Muslim students. Also, we often have many snow, snow days left at the end of the year. So it, it would make sense that we could use one of those to celebrate Eid. In other words, closing schools on Eid would improve the academic well-being of students, show respect and inclusivity towards the Muslim community and would not cause, um, too much disruption to the academic calendar. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Manchester. I'm in the 4th grade. So I would like to take, I would like to take off from Eid, from school because I, because we have homework, homework. We won't be able to open our gifts and spend time with our family, not having dinner, not celebrating. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melad the 3rd grade, um, Melad the Suki, um, 3rd grade. I want Eid off because I like to spend time with my family. I don't like to miss school because I, I like my teachers and my classmates. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Hassan Shaker and I'm in 8th grade and I am 13 years old. We should have Eid off because everyone has their own holiday off. Like when you guys have Christmas, you don't think about school. You think about family and what to do. You have a fun time. And when it's my holiday, why do I get a test? And when it's your holiday, you guys don't get work. So, but put yourself in my shoes. Would you guys want that in your own holiday? Thank you for your time.
Hi there, um, my name is Round. I'm a sophomore in the high school. And Eid is definitely a significant religious holiday for us Muslims. And it is a time for the family and it is time for like the community to participate into this holiday, but it is difficult when we also have school. Students also have to pay the price for, uh, missing work during the school, which is really not fair because if you were to compare it, such as Christmas, students wouldn't really be penalized for missing work. And, um, yeah, the stress definitely is not the best, uh, to have, especially when you come back from a holiday. And, um, East Brunswick is definitely all about diversity, but what, what part of it is there if we can't even get one day off the calendar? And so that's what I just wanted to point out.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shazad Shaker, 8 Lantern Lane. So, uh, as my wife was saying, Aram Shaker, that we've been trying to get Eid off for the past 10 years. And you know what? We always even try to even meet in the middle. We've always tried to do that. Where like, uh, we discuss things such as, we're gonna go ahead and put it on the internal calendar that Eid's there, so at least teachers are a little more careful about not planning critical, uh, information on those days such as tests, graduations and so on. And that, that was really my expectation too. I'm like, okay, I'll, I'll take relief in that. Like at least they're not gonna have a test that day. They're not gonna have a review that day. But you know what? Like, or like, uh, I won't have a call home saying, hey, your kid missed school today. But what's been going on for even the, the past 10 years, I'll be at prayers and there's my son, my son's right next to me. And suddenly I get my phone's just starts going off and it's just like, your son was not at school today. Call the attendance office. I'm just like, I thought this thing was on the calendar. And you know, this was an expectation of mine that I wouldn't have to be hearing that like that my kids are delinquents in school on my holiday. I mean, so this is something that like always like got me in the neck right over there. And then on top of that, I see the stress that my kids are going through. They miss critical information. They're like, Dad, I had a review that day. We have a test tomorrow and I had to take this day off. And you know what? That causes a lot of stress on them. I see them working till 2:00 in the morning when they should be sleeping at night and getting their nine hours of sleep because they have to make up some work. So yeah, we're still having all these problems. We're getting, we're getting those calls at home. Where, uh, kids are still getting tests even on Eid. Like there are people, my kids, sometimes they have the test on Eid. Sometimes they have it like, uh, the next couple of days and they gotta cram. They're missing valuable reviews that they should, that, you know what? They were just down in school because it was Eid. What's it called? And then like, um, lastly, these, this new block schedule, these classes are an hour and a half that these kids are missing each time they're not in class. That's a lot of information that you're missing and how, how are they expected to make this stuff up? Really, at the end of the day, we need the support of you guys over here. We need you guys to kind of put yourselves in our shoes. Think about this as your child, like who missed that hour and a half of class or missed that review or like was not there for the test and the anguish and stress it puts them through. Would you want that for your own kids? And we know the answers now. We just want you guys to give us that as well. We just would like Eid off at this point because even though we tried this whole cal- calendar thing, it's just not doing the trick. We need that day off at this point. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Junis Alfiky. And Alfiky, I'm in Mr. D's class. Can we please have Eid off? Thank you.
What, what grade is he? What grade are you?
What, what grade?
Kindergarten.
That is very impressive. Great job, kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Hiba and I'm a sophomore in high school. And I think it's critical to recognize that Eid is a major day that for us students to celebrate and spend time with our friends and family. And I think Eid is one time we're able to reward ourselves with the month worth of fasting. I have family and friends from districts like Edison as well as South Brunswick who have this opportunity and have the day off. And I find it unfair how other districts are able to have off while some aren't, like while us and like other districts aren't. And it should be equal and we should all have days off. And a day off on this significant day would truly be beneficial to us. It would, I would have liked Eid off as many religions have days off as well for their own holidays. And it'd be great to enjoy my holiday without worrying about making up work or studying for tests and without the stress on my shoulder. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Saif and I'm a Muslim student going to East Brunswick, uh, High School. The Muslim community in East Brunswick, um, public schools have, have significantly increased over prior years. And Eid is one of the major religion, religious holidays, uh, celebrated by the Muslim community. Recognizing this holiday in the same way as Christmas or Hanukkah would demonstrate respect for the religious diversity of, um, this community. Another issue that would be resolved as, um, as a result of allowing Eid off would be absences and the, and removing makeup work. Makeup work, this would allow students to, Muslim students to focus more on the beauty of Ramadan, of the end of Ramadan and Eid rather than, um, having to, uh, rather than being overwhelmed by the, by make, makeup tests and makeup assignments. And, um, recognizing Eid in schools would promote cultural and religious inclusivity and understanding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The corner store, can I just ask, are there any other students that want to speak?
There's a huge line outside.
Can we please have the students come in to speak?
Excuse me, excuse me. If you're gonna speak, it's time to speak, not coordinate.
Sorry. My name is Nancy Elbasti. I live at 5 Jason Drive. I have three students in East Brunswick.
Can you please repeat your name?
Nancy Elbasti.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I'm a member of the Eid Committee, uh, which Aram previously mentioned. Today I speak on the committee's behalf. We reignited the effort to incorporate Eid as a recognized school closure back in May of 2022. Our efforts thus far have included grassroots research to quantify the number of absences on Eid al-Fitr last year as well as a very detailed letter submitted to this very board with 300 signatures of members of this community of all different faiths. So I'm going to start by explaining to you why we want Eid off and I'm gonna end with asking a question to figure out how we can move ourselves forward. Firstly, education is a priority in this Muslim community. It's the reason myself and many other families moved to this district that's highly ranked and known as a blue ribbon district. We strongly believe that for the sake of equity, all EB Muslim students should not be forced to make sacrifices and choose between missing classwork or assessments and celebrating their holiday with their families and friends. We recognize that their peers of other faiths such as those that may be Jewish, Hindu or Christian do not have to make these sacrifices. Therefore, we make note of this inequity in access to the curriculum and assessments. And the inequity continues once they return to school when they're pulled aside and isolated to make up work or put in a noisy hallway to take a test while their peers move on with instruction. This sends signals of inequity and isolation that over time is gonna hinder the establishment of our students' social and emotional needs. This then prevents our students from developing to their full potential, which is in direct conflict with the EB School District's mission statement. And I quote, "Our chief goal is to help each child in the East Brunswick Public Schools develop to his or her fullest potential." This educational gap that is created leaves room for sickness to grow, fosters inequity in instruction and assessment and creates a feeling of exclusion. EB has a growing Muslim community where this exclusion cannot continue. There has been significant post-COVID growth. There are two mosques in town. We know of at least 200 absences on Eid al-Fitr last year, and that's only with grassroots research. When our students miss a day of school to celebrate and are not given an equal chance in their education, they feel excluded. Muslim students are part of the fabric of this district that preaches inclusivity and they too need to be included. They are a part of the colorful quilt that is EB and this needs to be reflected by this district. EB has been a pioneer during the COVID pandemic. And so we are asking EB to follow the pioneers in Middlesex County and the rest of New Jersey, mentioned by Aram Shaker, and recognize the needs of this growing Muslim community and designate a school closure on Eid to all students this year and in the years to come. Dr. Valesky assured me that he's in support of this initiative, so I would like to know what more can we as a community do?
Are there other students outside that want to speak? Because if the line doesn't mind, you may want to get the younger. We want to let the kids. Okay, if somebody wants to check on that, you, you can go ahead. I just.
My name is Farhanach Chistijavide, 7 Jason Drive. Good evening, everyone. I'm a member of the Eid Committee. I'm also speaking today as a native resident of East Brunswick of over 40 years who graduated from East Brunswick High School, a class of 1999, and a mother of two, one of whom is a 1st grader at Central. Growing up in East Brunswick in the 80s and 90s was not like today. The understanding of Muslim holidays such as Ramadan and Eid was extremely limited. Over the last several years, I have seen how East Brunswick has increased in diversity as well as inclusion. My younger self could have never imagined being part of the Ramadan lighting ceremony in our town. And for that, I really do commend that initiative the township did. What better way to continue that inclusivity than to add Eid as a holiday in our school calendars? To show our children that their holiday is recognized and included like their peers' holidays are. To show that East Brunswick is catching up with its neighboring towns such as South Brunswick, North Brunswick, Monroe, Edison and Piscataway, to name a few, who are already have Eid on their school calendars. I would like now to read a letter from the East Brunswick Community Church pastor, Thomas Wong. Dear East Brunswick Board of Ed, realizing that establishing a school calendar requires careful planning and consideration of state requirements and local needs, we stand along Aram Shaker's request for Eid al-Fitr to be included for consideration on a religious holiday added on our school calendar in recognition of its importance to our Muslim brothers and sisters. We believe that this would be a significant way to honor the cultural and religious diversity representative of our community. Thank you for your consideration. This is respectfully submitted by Pastor Thomas Wong. Thank you.
Hello. Alright. So I don't really, so I don't really have much to say.
Can we have your name, please?
Oh.
Just your name.
My name is Sal.
And your grade?
Um, I'm 7th grade.
Thank you.
Alright, so I don't have much to say, but I just wanna, when I wanna, when I wanna celebrate my holiday, I don't wanna worry about missing school and not going. I just wanna feel like I fit in with everyone else and that I'm not different. I'm not, I feel like I don't, I don't wanna feel like I don't belong, you know? And I just wanna feel like I'm the same as everyone else, you know? Everyone gets a holiday off. I feel like we should get our holiday off as well. That's all I have to say, like I said before.
Thank you, Sal.
Hello, my name is Humira Shahid and I'm as a parent of, as a resident of East Brunswick. Uh, I just wanna add a point. As of now, you have heard the issue with this, as a student's perspective, what they feel, how they like have to explain everything and everything. But as a parent, I wanna bring an issue, like as a parent, you all know that how Christmas and all, any other holiday is important for you to let your child know or teach them that what, how the community and the, um, you know, the value and the custom is important, that's how you teach your, your kid. And we want the same for our kids, to know that what is the beauty of our religion, what, how it, the values and the culture. And isn't it the beauty of this beautiful township, the diversity? And we want this, we respect everyone and we want the same respect and the recognition as everyone else. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Scarborough. I'm a resident of East Brunswick and, um, the mother of two children who graduated successfully from the school's district. Today I have a letter from Reverend Karen Johnston of the Unitarian Society located in East Brunswick. Uh, Reverend Johnston couldn't be with us tonight, so I'm acting as her spokesperson. Um, Reverend Johnston says, "Dear members of East Brunswick Board of Education, um, the East Brunswick Education Association and Dr. Valesky, with appreciation for the many ways you serve the East Brunswick community, please recognize that these are the words of Reverend Karen G. Johnston, not myself, nor the congregation that Reverend Johnston leads, the Unitarian Society, at 176 Tyssus Lane. Reverend Johnston couldn't be here this evening but wanted to share her support for the formal recognition of Eid al-Fitr as a school holiday in East Brunswick. Reverend Johnston writes to you because she believes one need be Muslim to support the hopes of our Muslim neighbors and friends to be recognized and honored. Reverend Johnston writes to you because she believes that all our children, no matter what they believe about the nature of God and the universe or what tradition their families observe, benefit when our cultural, religious holidays are recognized. She writes to you because there is an inherent predisposition in the American school year calendar that favors traditionally Christian holidays. This must change and evolve just as our communities are changing and evolving. We must live into the truth that our own individual or family traditions are not demeaned or diminished when we make space in our municipal calendars to recognize the holidays beyond those currently recognized. Reverend Johnston hopes, as do I, that you will support the recognition of Eid al-Fitr as a school holiday in East Brunswick. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a little bit too tall for this mic, so I apologize. Hope you all are having a good evening tonight. To introduce myself, my name is Aid Usain. I'm the outreach coordinator here, uh, at the Council on American Islamic Relations, the New Jersey chapter. CARE New Jersey is, uh, well CARE is America's largest and oldest Muslim civil rights advocacy group. Our mission is to enhance understanding of Islam, encourage dialogue, protect civil liberties. protect civil liberties, empower American Muslims, and build coalitions that promote justice and mutual understanding. As a representative of CARE, I'm here to ask you all to please consider the Muslim holidays of Eid on East Brunswick's school calendar. New Jersey has the highest population density for a state for Muslims in the entire country. After this past election, there have been more than 40 Muslims elected in the state of New Jersey, possibly the top in the entire country. New Jersey has become a hotspot, a safe space for Muslims to come, whether they're coming overseas or from a different state in the country. Yet, there are still very few school districts that are adding Eid into their school calendar as a day off. Some may say that it is for us an excuse to not go to school. But for these Muslim students, it's more than that. It is a symbol of inclusivity and diversity. It's a symbol for them to freely practice their faith, that there, that them, their parents and their grandparents have been ridiculed for more than two decades. For Muslim students, the ability to express their identity freely and safely means more to them than social club, than them having fun. Being Muslim is not just a name, it's in their blood. So we ask you, please, grant these students an equal opportunity to excel academically, grant them the opportunity to freely express themselves as Muslims. And if you need any education, any of you, education on how Eid works, the dates, the times, anything about the Islamic faith, I assure you, CARE and the Islamic leaders who are here presently and all over the state of New Jersey, we are a resource.
10 seconds.
And we will make sure that you have as much information as you need and want and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aiden Cholery, and I'm from Hammerhill Upper Elementary School. I would like to see Eid as a recognized holiday so that we as Muslims can celebrate our religion and stand up and spend time with family and friends and not get an unexcused absence at school. And so that we don't have to catch up on missed work. If other religions have holidays off in East Brunswick, then it's only fair that we as Muslims should too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I think that we should have our holiday off because most of the other religions get to have their holiday off, and we're one of the only ones that doesn't. So I think it's only fair if we get to have one too.
Thank you. Sarah, what grade are you in?
Third.
Thank you.
Very well spoken.
Hi, my name is Afreen Shalan. That was my little sister. I graduated from East Brunswick High School in 2018, and I have siblings that go to Central in 3rd and 4th grade. I moved to East Brunswick in 2014, and I was quite scared about it. But I distinctly remember the first day of school, walking into AP Bio. I was seated next to three girls, Sarah, Maray, and Christina. They immediately welcomed me, and we've been best friends for seven years. And it happens to be that Christina is a Korean Catholic, Maray is an Egyptian Coptic, and Sarah is a Bengali Muslim, just like me. And I think that speaks to how great of a school system we have where our students are able to build such deep connections with people who are just like them, like me and Sarah, and people who are so different demographically, like me, Christina, and Maray. And I think that this school system does a great job of making sure that our students in value diversity and value respecting one another. And that could be reflected better if we were to give our Muslim students off on Eid. I remember, as I said, I met my friends in AP Bio. I took all AP classes in high school. And every Eid, when the time would come around, I would get a little worried because missing an entire day of AP classes is a lot of work to make up. It's a lot of self-studying, and it's a lot of self-teaching, and you wind up not quite understanding the concepts that were clearly explained in front of the teacher. And not to mention, there were a few times where there were actually exams on Eid. And so then I would have to either make up, come in early to take the exam again, or, you know, miss more class time taking that exam in school. So it really does set you back. If you're taking AP classes, it makes you stay up later, and it's truly unfair just because you're trying to celebrate your holiday. And not to mention, the whole time during Eid, you kind of have it in the back of your mind that, oh, gosh, I'm going to have to stay up so late tomorrow. I have to come in so early to make this work up. And I think our Muslim children deserve the chance to just celebrate freely and come back to school and not be behind. You know, we really do a good job of valuing diversity. We feel that in the schools, and I think this is just another way to show that. So I hope that, you know, next year, when Sarah, Maray, and Christina text me Eid Mubarak, I can tell them that, hey, we won. We got Eid off this year. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Zoya. I go to East Brunswick High School. I'm a senior there. I love being in East Brunswick, truly, and I'm sad I have to leave soon to go to college. However, as a student leaving East Brunswick, it saddens me knowing I've never had a day off for Eid. We haven't been included on the calendar, and we have been asking for it to be included since 2014. Our holiday has never been recognized by the school district despite having a lot of Muslims in our town. I still have a little brother who is in 9th grade at Churchill, and I really hope that he gets to enjoy our holiday of Eid as a recognized day off so that he doesn't have to worry about making up tests and schoolwork. It's just annoying that there's active school going on while it's our religious holiday. I don't want him or anyone having to worry about taking time off to celebrate a religious holiday. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ahmed Al-Fiki. I live at 5 Chitty Lane. My family moved here and from Saraval two years ago. We were so happy to be part of East Brunswick. We respectfully request support to consider adding the Islamic holiday to the calendar. It is important for our children to be represented in our district and allowing our families to celebrate these important holidays. Obviously, I don't want to repeat all the members said, but our request simply will make a big impact to families and to our community. So please consider it. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Asim Ajmeri. I live in Rebel Run Drive. I want to say that I think it's... You know, I've been living in East Brunswick since 2014. We have, I have three children in the schools here. I think East Brunswick is a great place to live, raise your children, go to school. That's why we moved here, and that's why we advise all of our friends to move here, and several of them have. And I think it's, you know, it's a matter of numbers. It's pretty straightforward. We have a certain percentage of people moving in. You have a percentage of people like Nancy mentioned, 20%, 30%. I'm not sure what it is, 200 kids missing school because of a religious holiday? Just makes sense. I've been working in the banking industry for the past 20 years. I work at Citigroup. If you need anything, let me know. I'm here. But either way, you know, I used to live locally. I used to live in Woodbridge a while ago. Grew up there, didn't have school, didn't have Eid off. It was troublesome, yes. We got through it, yes. But we have the opportunity here to make a difference, have these kids have a little bit easier time taking their religious holiday off, not having to worry about making up school, schoolwork, not worrying about the extra stress, and actually enjoy the time off. And like somebody else mentioned before, it is a religious holiday. So it is an act of worship, taking this day off. And, you know, it would not be fair, especially to these kids, to have to compromise that when the other faiths may not have to do that. And that's basically what I have to say, but thank you so much for your time. See you guys later.
Hello. My name is Ambreen. I live at 9 Kentis Berry Circle. I've been an East Brunswick resident for the past 13 years. I have three beautiful children here in the school district. We moved here purely for the schools. My son has already spoken. I'm here speaking on behalf of my non-verbal daughter, who's outside in the hallway right now humming. I just think that it would be wonderful for the children to have the day off. I mean, I don't know what anybody else has mentioned, the day, the way Eid is set up. We have prayer at 7 o'clock in the morning. There is no way that the kids can choose one over the other. I mean, I've negotiated with my son several times, that you say, oh, Mom, but I have to make this up. And I'm like, sorry, you're joining everybody else at 7:00 a.m. on a football field on cold turf? I mean, that is what we're doing as a family. So, I mean, actually, having the day off would be one... I mean, it's akin to sending your kids to school on Christmas. That's essentially what we're saying. So I hope that the board will consider it, and as everybody else, we're very happy to have our children in the East Brunswick school system, and we appreciate everything that you do, and thank you for the time today to listen to all of us.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Katovic. I'm the director of the New Brunswick Islamic Center, located just about 7, 8 minutes from here in North Brunswick, New Jersey. A significant portion of our constituents are actually from East Brunswick, East Brunswick, South Brunswick, North Brunswick, New Brunswick. But we have a considerable constituent from East Brunswick. And one of the challenges that, as the director there, that we face and part of our programming in terms of our dealing with youth, is the ongoing challenge, and I was from, you know, born and raised Muslim from Teaneck, New Jersey. And so I have a long history here in the state. One of the challenges that we're constantly faced, and our youth have been faced with, and due to certain media, and I'm sure you guys are all well aware of this, is a sense of not belonging. And this is one of the challenges that we always emphasize at our center and all the centers that are in the area, the half dozen or so, that they're emphasizing with the youth that, in fact, no, you do belong, right? And my parents had to go through with this with me, growing up, and I grew up with my children, the same thing. And I think that, you know, sending a message to those in East Brunswick, and those students who are here, they're such a significant population now, that in fact, no, this is part of, you're a part and parcel of the American experience. And I think that this is something that should be celebrated and should be honored here, as has been done in South Brunswick, as has been done in Piscataway, as has been done in Franklin Park, where I live now, that it's recognized as a significant part and contributors to the American, fabric of American society. And to send that message to our Muslim children that are here, that, no, in fact, you do belong, right? And I think this would be a good step in that direction. Secondly, in terms of what the children are doing, especially for the upcoming Eid holiday, they're fasting every day for 30 days. My youngest kid does it, the oldest kid, the high school. They're going through this spiritual process and going through. When kids are eating lunch, they're not eating lunch. When their kids are playing gym, they're playing gym as well, too. They can't go get water, et cetera, et cetera. Tremendous accomplishment, 30 days. And then to have at the end that they have to make up work, that they have to now choose whether they're going to celebrate the month they just did or not. How many of our children at our center, when we have our programs and Eid programs on the day of, some of them trying to run back to school because they're going to get penalized or have extra work to do if they can come in late? Others are actually just compromising altogether. It's just going to be too much. I can't go to the prayer, as some of the parents had mentioned. And then those who are choosing to go to the prayer, and their parents are, you know, bringing them, of course, then they're making up the work thereafter. And so it's not, we shouldn't be putting our children that somehow they're being penalized for celebrating and commemorating their religious holiday, which is, it takes a tremendous amount of effort and dedication. And so I appreciate that, and we hope that, on behalf of the New Brunswick Islamic Center, and the other Islamic centers that are all in the area, we're all, you know, we have coordinating council, that you will honor this Eid holiday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sammy.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Al-Samra. I live at 5 Jason Drive. There are so many students who are out here, and there's even more students who miss that holiday. This isn't a one-off day that's being missed by one person, but it's a whole swath of students. And the whole long line of folks who have come up here and spoken about what is the benefit to them, I think that is clear, but there's a clear benefit to the town of East Brunswick for acknowledging and setting aside a day to celebrate Eid. That benefit, for one, I think it'll lessen the burden on the attendance office for that day by having 300 or 400 kids out that day. Number two, I think it'll place East Brunswick in that, you know, that echelon of towns that pride themselves on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And, you know, this isn't the first town to do this, or many other towns who have done it in New Jersey. And three, and I think this has been touched on, it removes the stigma of being the other. And I grew up in New Jersey with that stigma. I remember when I was fasting, I would take a buy-school lunch, not eat it, and bring it down to wrestling, put it in my locker. And then during wrestling practice, when the sun was set, I would take out the lunch and then eat it. And then ultimately, I would have to make a decision between, do I miss my wrestling match? Do I miss my class? Or do I go ahead and, you know, forego my religion for that day to attend class? And so I wanted to thank you very much for your attention. I know there's a lot of folks here who have a lot to say, but I think ultimately, when you have students who grow up in an environment that's inclusive, they're going to love that town, and they're going to give back to that town. And that's the biggest potential. So I appreciate you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed 5 Walton Court, resident of East Brunswick since 2009. I was thinking, coming up, what should I say? I didn't come prepared. Everything that could be said has been said, and I don't think I can add anything on top of it. More than that, I have four kids, all going through the schooling system of East Brunswick. Very proud East Brunswick resident, very proud American kids. And every year is the same thing. It becomes monotonous, like they already know when the time comes, and when the time comes for other people to be celebrating their holidays, maybe Christmas or something else, they come and ask us, and we don't really have a good answer for them. Just to put things in perspective, I'll ask each and every one of you to imagine yourself in my shoes and asking a group of people a holiday for your kids or your grandkids, if you're lucky to have them. So just to say that I'm very optimistic about today, that it will happen. Aram Shaker is doing a great job, and I support her in her request to the East Brunswick schooling system. And I'm pretty confident that it'll be accepted, because when we go out, we are very proud East Brunswick residents, and we tell people we belong to a great town. And we want it to be the greatest town where our kids are felt inclusive, and they're felt like just other kids. And it's more important to them and to us than anything else. And I think it's about time that we made Eid holidays a part of East Brunswick's calendar system. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Heba Migahid. I live off of 27 Christian Drive, and I have three kids across many different schools that attend the East Brunswick schools. Two of them are here. One of them is at home. He's younger. So I work for a consultancy services firm, and a part of our consultancy services is to make sure that companies across all industries of many different sizes are sustainable with their company operations. A piece of sustainability is making sure that they are well-established from a diversity, equity, and inclusion perspective. That's not only reporting to their investors D, E, and I numbers, but also making sure that they have programs and initiatives in place to make sure workforce, regardless of background, religion, ethnicity, sexuality, feel a sense of belonging. There is no doubt that East Brunswick schools are good in terms of numbers when it comes to D, E, and I, but why aren't you establishing programs like taking this holiday off to make sure that your Muslim students feel a sense of belonging? So with that, I ask you to please consider this holiday off so that your Muslim students can feel a sense of belonging as you do with other students of different backgrounds. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marina, and I'm currently a junior at East Brunswick High School. So as you may or may not know, the month leading up to Eid is a very holy month in which we fast every day from sunrise to sunset. And we do this for 30 days, and on the last day, which is Eid, we celebrate, and we have a lot of fun. And although the absence on Eid is excused, missing a day of school only adds to an unideal amount of making up work and a day of instruction. Every year, I miss school because I want to be with my family, and every year, after seeing the load of work I missed, I say, I should have just went to school. My little cousins, who attend Irwin Elementary School, asked me last year, why do we have to go to school on Eid? I believe that incorporating this holiday isn't just a necessary means for cultivating diversity and representation, but it's also a way for growing kids to feel at home and live in a town where every holiday matters and is recognized. The Muslim community here is quite large and plays a big part in our town. I speak for all the students here when I say that I hope that by my last year in a town, which I've spent 16 years in, Eid al-Fitr will be considered as a day off. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aiman Mohammed. I live in 201 Rus Lane, East Brunswick. I've been in the township since 2011. I'd like to start by... I'd like to start by expressing my gratitude for giving the Muslim community the chance to express themselves and to, and you giving us the consideration to give the kids a chance to celebrate their tradition and religious holidays. I have two points to make. The first point is, it's, it is as important to you and giving the Muslim kids that holiday as it is important to them. It is a statement that East Brunswick is making to all the townships around of what kind, and what kind of attitude should we have towards minorities? Not only Muslim minorities, but other minorities in the community. That's one point. So it's also about you, not only about Muslim students, and how they deal with the religion, with the religious duties and their schoolwork. It's also 50% about what East Brunswick is. That's one point. The second point, I think I forgot it. But the second point, actually, I remembered. It's about digging into the potential of Muslim students, and what can they give back to the community, and what can they give back to the school system with their ethics, with their diversity, and with their attitude. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Hello, I am Khalifa Dia, and I'm a ninth grader in Churchill Junior High School. And I have been in EB for six years now. I'm just a student, and I don't come here with a lot, but I do come here with a lot of experience in the school district. And as the Board of Education, you know, you should care. So I've, ever since like I've been here, there's like a large demographic of Muslim people in my school. And since we share the same religion, we have like bonded over so many things, like especially Eid. Now, that's the most important thing. Eid is like a very important thing for all of us, because we spend 30 days fasting. And this is the day that we finally actually get to like spend time with family, and we get to eat. And, you know, what kind of ruins it all is coming back, and it's, we have all schoolwork. And I get really stressed out by schoolwork, and I don't really want to spend the time after thinking about schoolwork. And I, yeah, that's all, really.
Good evening. My name is Sam Khan. I'm the chairman of American Muslim Council. I am basically from Edison, and I'm here to, just to be part of this group who's trying to reach out to you so they can have an Eid celebration. So many speakers before me, they have already spoken what is the importance of Eid in Muslim life. 1.6 billion people celebrate Eid around the globe. And mostly in the Muslim countries, three days holidays, straight three days holidays in there. What they're asking simply, that East Brunswick High School is the best districts in the surrounding area, especially Edison, South Brunswick, or other areas. So only thing is missing, just if you give them just one day off, so what will impact their life, what, how they will react? My organization, American Muslim Council, to bring the American Muslim community into the mainstream public affairs party politic. My own daughter, she's a Board of Education, last, this year elected, her name is Alicia Khan. She's, she's in a meeting today, too. I was supposed to be there, but I just came in here today. So what we are asking, so if you can include us, to be part of, we all is part of these American systems. American Muslim Council organized a largest interfaith dinner in the tri-state area in the month of Ramadan. We bring people of, hundreds of people of non-Muslim to celebrate, to share bread with us, to see what is all Islam all about. And the same time, on the last Christmas, on December, for last 10, 10 years, we celebrating American holiday, especially the Christmas, with all of you together. So what we do, we are one of you. We are, we want to be one. But if you just, simple, what is the formula? What can one day take you, take away from you guys, from the school district? Just think about this today. If one day can make a difference on these people's life, this is your, up to you if you can make that decision today. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sandra. I've been a resident in East Brunswick for about
Sandra, your last name, please?
Sharbash.
Thank you.
Yes, for about 13 years now. I have two children, middle school and elementary school. And I know that, I don't want to repeat what was said, and I wasn't here for the entire meeting, but I did want to quote some things from our district's philosophy, our vision and mission of East Brunswick. And I think we do a phenomenal job, you know, teaching and speaking to the philosophy. And if you don't mind, I wanted to pull some of the comments that you list, or, you know, some of the things that you hold true to East Brunswick District. And when you read them, you recognize, or I hope you would recognize, that the Muslim community is left out, and not necessarily staying true to our philosophy when it comes to applying it to those students and those families. The first line says, "Children are the focus of the East Brunswick Public Schools." The question is, is it all children? Are you considering all children, all cultures, all backgrounds? Then you go on to say, or we go on as a district, to say that each individual is different, and therefore, our efforts must be directed toward identifying and satisfying those individual needs. Are the needs of those Muslim students being met? We encourage diversity and flexibility in our programs. Are we really being diverse and respecting and giving the opportunity so that they're not missing their instruction and curriculum and assessment? And they're, we're making sure that it's being met with equity and equality. Are they missing out on their curriculum? Are they being forced to make up exams in a noisy environment and not necessarily, and taking away from the equity? Moving on, we say, I'm not going to read the entire philosophy. Okay, then we go on to say, "Knowledge and appreciation of the culture, the economics and political facets." Again, cultural knowledge, you know, if we're putting, if we can put it on the calendar, that might help speak to that bullet point. Respect for diversity among individuals and societies. Are we making an effort to include and support the diversity of the Muslim community? That becomes the question. Let's see. Develop a positive attitude towards learning. You know, if I'm not able to celebrate the holiday with my family, again, are we speaking to that bullet? So again, staying true to the philosophy, I think East Brunswick does a phenomenal job.
10 seconds.
Staying true to that, I just, I ask you to go back to our philosophy and making sure that we're considering that and how it applies to the Muslim students. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Ali. I go to Churchill Junior High School. I'm in eighth grade. And I wanted to show you guys from a student's perspective how we feel about coming back from Ramadan and how we need to come back and do schoolwork, and we're not really focused on, on our religious purposes. And sometimes, most of us, we have to choose between either schoolwork or making up a test or following our religious practices. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hamza. I go to Churchill Junior High School. I'm in eighth grade. For me, I just wanted to say that in terms of like on the day of Eid, since it's a day of celebration, usually it's a day where we all get to like see family and like friends. And I feel like especially in this district towards the later grades where it gets really like hard, sometimes we can't see some of our close friends and family because they have to like go to school, and they've got, and they're like, I can't, I can't miss this work because like if I do this, it's gonna like, it's gonna be really hard to make this up. So I think it's like, it's really, it gets harder to run the earlier, later grades when there's a lot more homework. And it's just gets so much more tougher to make up that work. And you're supposed to be a day of celebration, but you're like, oh, if, will that teacher give me that much homework? Maybe if I could do this tomorrow? And I think it gets really stressful, and that's, yeah, it's kind of it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarweth Malik. I'm at 184 Mill Town Road. I wanted to share a little story. So when I was, I was born and raised here. I, when I was in seventh grade, I joined, I got selected for the JV varsity basketball team. And this was like a long, 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 long time ago. This has died here. And I remember like the first JV, they let me play basketball in shorts with tights on or sweatpants. And that was okay, and my passion was to play basketball. Also, hockey wasn't available where I was, I was. It was really odd. A little Pakistani girl wanting to play hockey or basketball. This is the early 90s, late 80s. And so I was like, you know what? I'll do it. I will become the world's greatest three-point shooter, because I can't dunk, not at this height. I knew I wasn't growing anymore. But when JV was over, I tried out for varsity. And for varsity, there was a very strict dress code. And that was no tights and no sweatpants. And so my career to the WNBA ended that day. At that time, there was no community like this. There was never, you know, being a first-generation immigrant, it wasn't like you, or the daughter of one, it wasn't like you thought you're allowed to speak up for what you want or what you believe in. You just sort of like went with the flow, so a no was a no. These kids are very fortunate in that they're able to express their, you know, their ownership to their new home, because we are economic migrants. We aren't looking to go back. Most of us, even that are here, whether we came 100 years ago or now. And when you call someplace your home, you want to be accepted in, in the entirety of wherever you are. I went on to go to a Catholic, all-girls private school up in North Jersey. I know, it's like really interesting. And we would have Lent at school, and it would be such an amazing conversation because like, you know, you could talk about with your friends who were also fasting, or your Hindu friends that were fasting. And then there was a celebration that was recognized for their celebration or completion of their fasting. Whereas when I was done fasting, actually, the school cafeteria would close, the campus cafeteria would close at 5:00 p.m., and you know, I'd sort of be left to the vending machine because night classes were at 6:00, and, you know, I couldn't. So I just feel like these kids don't understand a lot of that, because I actually had parents who were telling me stories. I'm so sorry. They just really want to be owned by these streets. They want to be able to, when they're selling a home in East Brunswick 20 years from now, like I rode down these streets, these are my streets. And I feel like one way is to really include them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jahid, and I go to Hammershold Upper Elementary School. I'm in sixth grade, and I want Eid to be off because every other holiday is off. Thank you for listening. That's it.
Thank you, Jahid.
Good evening, everyone. This is Bushra Salman. I am IT solution architect by profession. And we moved to East Brunswick three years ago. I have two boys, 11-year-old and six-year-old, third grader and sixth grader. They go to One Stroffer Hammershore School. And so far, we have found our school district really great in many ways. We are just expecting more inclusion when it comes to diversity. Because whenever Eid comes, we have two Eids, Eidul Fitur, after fasting month, and Eidul Azha. So whenever Eid comes, my boys ask that, why we can't have that layer which our other fellow beings enjoy on Christmas or Hanukkah or other holidays? So I don't have answer for that yet, but I give them hope that we are included in many ways in the community, and we hope for the best regarding this as well. So I'm here to support that cause today. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Khulu Diliyada. I'm at 19 Raf Lane. As a physician, medical educator, and a researcher, you could imagine I'm so focused on academics. My kids, and I'm a mother of six kids, one of whom graduated from East Brunswick schools. My kids always know that absences are a big no-no. And the only exception for that is the first day of Eid. As Muslims, we have two major Eids. One is which comes after Ramadan, and it's a three-day long. And another one, which still doesn't fall on school days, it's a four-day long. All what we ask is the first day of Eid to be off for the kids, because there's no other option for them to attend school. The other thing is, I wanted to share a very interesting story from the Sayerville District that happened last year. They did have on their calendar the first day of Eid off, and it was on Tuesday, according, I guess, to the Google Calendar. And then it was miscalculated for some reason, and the first day was a Monday. And when the Muslim community reached out to the Board of Ed, they impressively changed that day from Tuesday to Monday. So I always thought that I'm proud to be an East Brunswick resident, and I thought that East Brunswick should be a leader. Not only because of what they do, I do see how much effort all the staff and the administration do with my kids during Ramadan, and to understand a lot of our requests, even for prayer. So I really thank you for your effort, and thank you for your time. And I really hope you do accept our requests.
To the esteemed board members of East Brunswick Board of Education, good evening. My name is Aiman Mohammed. I am a, I've graduated East Brunswick High School in 2021, and I'm speaking from experience. I've been in the East Brunswick school system for a major part of my academic career. And I'm very honored to be a part of East Brunswick education system. And I was actually born in New York City, but my parents moved, moved to East Brunswick primarily because of the education system. How amazing it is, how they're at such a high standard in terms of academics, excellence, and they excel with integrity, a major phrase that we know by heart as East Brunswick students. And as such, I feel that it's only natural that we, as a community, should lean towards acceptance of other religions. And so we see acceptance within the Christian community, the Jewish community, the Hindu community. But why hasn't it been extended to the Muslim community as well? Why isn't it that we still haven't had Eid off? Why is it that students still have to go through the difficulty, this decision, that whether I have to go to school because I have to make up missed work, or do I get to celebrate? And even if I do get to take that day off, there's this constant fear building up on that day that, oh, I have to make up, make up my classwork, oh, I have to make up this and that. So this constant fear. So that's why I feel that as much as East Brunswick is an amazing community, I wish that it would be able to step forward and be able to be a part of this group, this niche of other districts, such as Edison, such as South River, who have accepted Eid as a holiday as well. So I hope to see that Eid would be a part of this, would be accepted by the community, and that we could have this day off. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Sophia El Disuki. I am a senior at East Brunswick High School. And I'm also the president of the MSA, the Muslim Student Association at the high school. And I've had the privilege of watching the Muslim population grow throughout all my high school career at East Brunswick. And the main concern of each and every single one of them, and I'm speaking on their behalf, is Eid. So speaking from a high school student's standpoint, we only have, as mentioned before, two holidays per year. And one of them happens to fall in a school year. And it's a three-day, but most students can maximum take one day off because of how much the workload is, especially students who take advanced placement classes or honors classes. Speaking from experience, last year Eid fell off, fell on the week before my AP exams. So to try, in effort to try to not fall behind in my classes, I asked teachers one week ahead of time. I spent the Sunday of before Eid, seven hours trying to catch up on my homework. But still, I was, when I came back after the day off, I was still behind. And it took me a week plus to get back, to catch up on my work. And now with block scheduling, you're missing valuable instructional time. And this leads to, instead of the days leading up to the holiday and the holiday itself, instead of celebrating the day, focusing on its religious importance, we tend to, it causes stress, which takes away from its importance. And as a town that values diversity, it's important that we not just say so, but show it as well to our it's important that we not just say so, but show it as well to our Muslim students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amr De Souy. I'm a proud resident in East Brunswick since 2017. We, and also I'm a father of six kids who are attending or still attending East Brunswick public schools. We moved in 2017 to East Brunswick specifically after meticulous research to provide to our kids the best education experience. I'm glad that we did this decision. But I think part of that important experience is not to feel left behind. While they do see all the followers of the major religions around them taking day offs during their holidays. Either through a dedicated day offs or through an events meticulously scheduled during that time. So I highly kindly requesting from you, if you can accept our request for that, because that will definitely make them feel more belonging to the community. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Saria Malik. I am a resident of South Brunswick. So you're probably wondering why I'm here. I also serve as the president for New Brunswick Islamic Center, a local community center and mosque. And there's two main reasons. You've heard a lot of reasons today, but two main reasons why I think that this should be accepted as a holiday. Being the president of a mosque, a local mosque, we see a lot of diversity. And recently, we've seen a huge growth of Muslims in the area. So that's number one reason to sort of represent the New Jersey population. The second reason is, as I mentioned, I'm a resident of South Brunswick. And one of the main reasons why we sent our son there, he's a senior in South Brunswick High School, was because of the openness and acceptance of different cultures and religions and faith. They've had the Eid celebration off for many, many years. I would consider South Brunswick and East Brunswick a pretty comparable educational system and town. There's a lot of tolerance in South Brunswick for many faiths and cultures. There's a lot of acceptance. But I think most importantly, my son really walks, you know, with his head up high when it comes to his faith. He believes in it strongly. He's never shied away from it. And one of the ladies spoke about being immigrant, you know, parents, being of immigrant parents. We sort of shied away from what our culture represented and what our religion. And my son does not shy away from that. So just for those two reasons, I really believe that, you know, Eid should be a holiday, especially in a community that is very diverse like East Brunswick. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hanya Ahmed. I am, I've been a resident of East Brunswick for 20 years. My husband actually moved here when he was two and lived here for about 10 years and then moved away and liked it so much. When we got married, we came right back. And the reason I wanted to speak tonight is, I actually grew up in Canada. And I remember being in high school in Canada. And, you know, it was in the 90s, so I'm dating myself. But it was not, it was not, things were not a given. As I think many kids today kind of expect things to be a given, right? Like they have, they are very aware of their rights. And at that time, it was a little bit different. So I remember, I just wanted to share a quick story of how I had to ask to pray at high school. And it was, I mean, I was very blessed. I had a very understanding vice principal and, you know, teachers. And it was fine. And I was able to get a prayer space. And the reason I'm sharing this story is, is a few years later, some of the administration at the school changed. And that prayer space was no longer so easy for the, you know, couple of Muslim students at that school who wanted a place to pray. And the reason I make that point is, is I have four kids. And they've all grown up in East Brunswick. And I think it would be nice if kids didn't have to, you know, rely on the change of administrations to want something to be baked in. And that's why I think it would be, you know, if Eid was codified and put into the school system, it's just becomes a given. And it's not something the kids have to think about, have to worry about. How do we ask for it off and all of that? That's basically what I wanted to share.
Good evening. My name is Duran Siddiqui. I am a teacher at Churchill Junior High School. I teach grade seven science special education and grade nine biology special education. I want to talk to you about school, about the impacts of, about Eid and how it impacts our education and learning on our students. As a child, I remember going to school on Eid and remembering that I wasn't able to concentrate in my classes because my mind would be swirling on how everybody is celebrating except me. I almost felt cheated that I fasted for a whole entire month and I was unable to celebrate with my friends and family. If I was able to convince my parents that I can stay home, the feeling of guilt and regret would just overwhelm me. Because I know the next day when I would go to school, I would have to make up all the missing assignments. As a special education teacher, I understand what a monumental task it is when students have missed all the homework assignments and classwork and understanding the concepts for the day. It is also a Herculean task for teachers to make sure that they're all caught up with assignments as well. Plus making sure that the students that are in class are also being taken care of. So allowing that one day off for the whole district will allow students to pray with ease, celebrate with their families, and also ease off the burden of the teachers who have to make sure that the whole entire Muslim community is being taken care of across the district. As I work for East Brunswick Public School, I do sense the feeling of community, family, friendship, and inclusiveness. That makes me proud to say that I am a Muslim teacher working for East Brunswick Public School. My coworkers and school administration have provided an amazing work environment for me, where I feel proud and safe to practice my religion. I would like my Muslim community of East Brunswick to feel the same inclusiveness that East Brunswick has allowed me to feel every single day. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amadul Barberry. I'm living in Terryville, Rice Run. I've been present in East Brunswick since 2013. First of all, I want to thank all of you for giving us this opportunity because I'm waiting for this for a long time. Originally from Queens, New York. And I remember when this, all the community in New York does trying to just get the chance for hearing like this, to say what they have to say after that, to listen or to get the opportunity for that. So they work very hard to get hearing like this to be set. So thank you for that, first thing. Second thing, that I'm here on behalf of my daughter. She has two issues. The first thing that we, once we have an issue that she has to go to school, she decides to go to school on Eid and on Eid day. So I've been in the position, I don't know what to do, I'll be honest to you guys. Because she feels very hard to miss that day. And also, I cannot, I don't want to force her because Eid for us is a happy day. So to force her to celebrate with the family and to stay home and that, and she feels stressful to miss the schoolwork is, the happiness not going to be there anywhere. So she will be sad. So there's no reason to stay home. And at the same time, she go to school, I feel not happy. So in this case, she's not happy, I'm not happy. So I lose those situation. This one point. The second point, nobody is mentioning that when you give us day off and you are Eid, my daughter, she has like friends are Jewish background, Christian. And she celebrates with them on Christmas and also Jewish holidays. So when the kids, all the kids has a holiday on the Eid day, she can celebrate with the family at the morning and we celebrate and we eat and everything. She has the rest of the day. So the rest of the day, she can go with her friend, like what she did in them holiday. So they can go the same thing with her in her holiday. That is a big achievement, actually. And that's to give her feeling that she's not missing anything, like we all same. So because she asked me this question, when we're going to be like, they celebrate my holiday with me in the same day of Eid as I'm do with them? So I said, it's going to come one day. And I'm very happy this is now is the starting. And I wish that you're going to give us this opportunity and you give all the students and all the, for Muslim and non-Muslim to celebrate together and we be one community. And also, at the end, I will ask you, please consider this as for Muslim and non-Muslim. Not just that, for the kids, for our kids, for the, for all East Brunswick kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David. And I'm actually new to East Brunswick. This is my first year in East Brunswick Public Schools. I came from South Brunswick. And I just wanted to know, like, why don't we already have the day off? Like, there's absolutely no reason. It's 2023. In South Brunswick, we had the day off and Muslim people could pray. And they didn't have to worry about missing school or anything like that. And I just want to know why. Thank you.
David, what grade are you in?
David, David, what grade are you in?
I'm in 10th grade.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Farooq Chishti. In 1995, I was a senior. That was a long time ago. I'm a 40-year resident of East Brunswick and I'm here for a reason. I definitely feel that East Brunswick has evolved since I was a child at five. And it's definitely getting more diverse because there was no one looking like me in 1982. So with that being said, I think that children do deserve that. And not to be funny, but South Brunswick, Edison, and Piscatawa are not better than East Brunswick. That's just a fact. You know, we're EB for life. So with that being said, I would say that, and this would be monumental and you all would be part of history. Your names would go down as the educational board to go ahead and approve this. So with that being said, I think the children deserve it, the families deserve it. And like I said, being here for 40 years, having diverse friends, got to more bar mitzvahs and bat mitzvahs and communities than everyone put together in this room. And that's a fact. So I think that East Brunswick is having a development center. And I think this is also part of the development. So thank you for your time and consideration. And I hope that April 24th, we'll have the day off? 24th, sorry. You know the calendar thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Farooq.
Hi, my name is Zee Fiyah. I work for the US Navy. I moved to East Brunswick in 2018 because I heard about the amazing school district that the town has. My wife works in New York. I work about an hour south. So we kind of decided to split the community in East Brunswick is what we decided on. And I grew up in New York in the New York public school system. And it was tough because every year, I basically had to make a sacrifice. Do I sacrifice celebrating with my friends and family or do I sacrifice my schoolwork? So I'm hoping we can do better with the next generation so that they don't have to make the same sacrifices that we did. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jazee Boney. I'm an eighth grader. I go to Churchill Junior High School. I just want to remind us that like Eid is a, like, it's a celebration that we have to show our gratitude to our God and be grateful for what we do have and share with those who don't have as much as we do. And I just want to thank you for considering our request. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jalid Only and I go to Hammershold Upper Elementary School. I hope that we could have Eid off because we have a lot of other celebrations off too. And I hope that you consider my request. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nori Nickball. And we live on Connolly Drive in East Brunswick by Bicentennial Park. My husband actually graduated from East Brunswick High School. And then after we got married, we moved back to East Brunswick. We have three children, a sophomore in college who went through the East Brunswick School, a senior in East Brunswick High School who just spoke earlier, and a freshman in East Brunswick High School. I'm a psychotherapist by profession and the founder of the Olive Branch Therapy Group located on Milltown Road in East Brunswick. To end the night, from a mental health perspective, I think having Eid off would simply give Muslim children what they deserve, right? The feeling of being heard by you, right? The feeling of being seen by you. And the feeling of being validated that their religion and their holiday matters. Because it really does, right? Just like every other child in East Brunswick matters, they too matter. Their story matters, their holiday matters, their family time matters. Like, we prepare a lot to have amazing Eid holidays, right? We fast all month. We send our children fasting. We wake up at 4 o'clock in the morning just to put them on the bus at 6:00. And sometimes they're, like, so many days they're like late. We're like shuffling them because they had to wake up at 4:00 to eat breakfast. Then they're tired, right? So like to end the month by not being seen. And also, it teaches other children in East Brunswick what Eid is. Like, so many kids that my kids have grown up with didn't even know that we had the holiday. Yeah, you learn about it in school, but only until you experience it and you know, oh my God, like, we're off today. Like, why are we off today? Oh, we're off on a random Thursday because it's Eid, right? So I think it would send a huge message. And also, it would make our children feel like they're a part of something, right? And they're a part of this community. So I really hope that you guys decide in our children's favor tonight, right? And thank you so much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public portion. Is there anything that needs to be separated out this evening?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I decided not to speak.
Miss, I'm sorry, the public session, the public portion is closed. Sorry.
I was going to ask if we want to move the whole agenda, if anyone wants anything separated out this evening.
Yes.
Yes, Mark.
Financial services, number three, the contract with Russell Marketing Research Incorporated.
Okay, number three under financial services, can we?
Yep, we'll separate that out.
Anything else? Then I'm going to ask for a motion for this evening's agenda minus second.
Second.
Wow, okay. I think it was Vicky and Heather? Heather, okay. So I'm going to take discussion on any items except for number three on financial services. Okay, well then, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Carangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong is not here. Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, may I please have a motion for financial services item number three, contract Russell Marketing Research.
So move.
Move by Mr. Winston. Second by Mr. Carangelo. I'm going to ask for discussion. I'm going to assume that Mr. Sizmar would like to begin.
Yeah, I actually want to start the discussion by, I don't know, the proper procedure, but ask for us to table this. There's a bunch of stuff came up tonight. This is directly related to changes in the calendar. The calendar has been established for this year and next year. So to just put this survey out, like I said, I feel I have some questions that I would like to ask our attorney. So I would just ask to table till the next meeting about the request for a research.
So once there's a motion on the floor, if you make a motion to table and it's seconded, that motion to table trumps the initial motion. So if you want to do that, you make a motion to table, there needs to be a second. There's a roll call on that. Okay, so now you do a roll call on the motion to table, item three, under financial services.
So Mark has made the motion to table.
I make the motion, yes.
And Jeff seconded it. Mr. Winston, sorry.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Okay, is there discussion on the motion to table this particular item?
Just one comment. The comment would be, this item is directly related to what we heard this evening. I appreciate the community coming out and I learned a lot tonight. So with that, thank you very, very much. As chair of the calendar committee, I believe this particular item that we're looking at circumvents my responsibility to that committee. And I think that in of itself supports Mark, Mr. Sizmar's motion. And I think this needs to be tabled and allowed to go through due process that this board has long established. And I look forward to addressing this issue for the group.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Winston. I appreciate people coming out. I appreciate people coming out tonight and this is, is something I'd love to look into a little bit more, please. That's why I'm asking to table.
Okay, am I?
Are you now, we need a vote? Yeah, you need a roll call.
Okay.
We don't need a roll call.
Well, the secretary.
On a, on a motion to table. You should do, on a motion to table, because I'd recommend.
End of discussion then? Okay, then I'm gonna go for the roll call vote, please.
We're voting on the motion to table.
To table this item.
So, we're just to table.
To table the item.
Yes. This is a motion to table Russell Marketing Research Contract. We'll do the roll call. Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Carangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lax.
Yes, motion carries, that item has been tabled. Okay, bringing us to committee reports, information items and for the good of the cause for the board. Any items? Okay, Mrs. Reese.
I just wanted to echo, I'm sure all the board members here, we all appreciate folks coming out to speak today and we, we all, you know, just the fact that you said, we're quiet, doesn't mean that we are not listening, we are listening and we hear what you're talking about and we, you know, it's, it's something that is important to you, it's important to us, it's just the nature of the setup here, it's more us listening to you and you doing the talking tonight.
And that's always the way and it's very difficult, especially because the board members do have to remain silent. And I will speak on behalf of the board members that aren't speaking right now and it's very kind of some of the board members to make individual statements, but generally, everything that's said at these board meetings, whether it's one person or, tonight, I believe it was.
A lot.
Sixty, sixty-two people. Your voices are always gonna be heard, but again, you know, Barbara said, we always make sure not to comment, but to let you be heard. But sixty-two voices is a very strong amount of voices. I was particularly touched by the youngsters, I have to say. And we don't generally talk about what's, what's said in it, but our little kindergarten friend. One, one of the things for us, because people do come to speak to the board at every meeting, a variety of different issues and one of the things that I will never, ever retire to seeing are our children and how well spoken they are and we expect it from the high school kids, but to see second, third, fourth graders and our kindergarten friend, it says a lot about the parents in this district and the students being as well spoken as they are at such a young age, so. Mr. Carangelo.
Yes, as past Chair of that committee, the calendar, turn it over to you, sir. Truly appreciate everyone. It was very enlightening and I can't say enough of what I felt inside as a person. So, thank you all, all sixty-two and everyone who else was up here. Just, God bless you guys, thank you very much for what you're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Okay. To find my place again, okay, so, all right. The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meeting and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act, are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. Whereas the length of closed session is estimated to be potentially two hours? I don't know if we're gonna be changing, well.
That's up.
It may change, up for modification, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or government interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Sizmar, any discussion? No, then the, oh, I'm sorry, the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Abstention, sorry. All right, thank you, good night. Thank you to those that came out this evening, everyone get home safe.